Okay, I'd like to call the order of the Lake Mills City Council meeting of November the 17th, 2015. Please rise and join me with, for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you would call the roll, please, Misty.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Grundon?
Here.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Here.
Mr. Scharr?
Here.
Mr. Knipple?
Here.
I just like to introduce our new member, Blaze Kips, I'm sorry.
Knipple.
Knipple. And he's, he represents the high school?
Yes.
Okay, well, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, corrections and or approval of the city council minutes of November 3rd, 2015? They are motion of acceptance.
So moved.
Discussion, second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion or corrections? If not, Misty, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Stand.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Moving on to correspondence, Mrs. Fritz?
Yes, I have some. I received an email from one of our constituents and the citizen wanted to get an answer to the question of, with TID 4, as we're doing work in TID 4, does the money for TID 4 come out of our taxes? And from my understanding, in talking with council, that it does not, it comes out of the TID fund. But I wondered if Steve had anything he wanted to add to that.
TIDS are the primary, basic, only economic development tool that cities have. And the way it functions is, is you designate a district, and then any new increment in that district pays to the TID. All other monies go to the general fund like they always did. So if Greg's property is paying taxes, it's not going into the TID unless he runs business in the TID or lives in the TID for some reason.
No, no, he was just concerned about the monies that we're spending in the, in TID 4.
Yeah, no, so what happens is, is you have, let's say, a property that's worth a hundred thousand dollars. Those taxes still go to all the properties that it normally did. Now, you put in a building that's now worth five hundred thousand dollars over and above the hundred thousand. The taxes on that five hundred thousand dollars goes into the TID. And then that money is then used to pay for improvements related to the improvement. So you might need new streets, new sidewalks, those types of things in order to support that business. But that business is really the only one that's paying the taxes. There's an argument that those taxes would have gone into the general fund and been available to the rest of the city. On the flip side is, is if you didn't have the TID, the business went to come, you went to have the new development. And so there's, there's all those key issues. And generally, what's in relation is, were the public improvements there that would have supported those businesses if the TID weren't there? And most of the time, in our cases, it's no.
But it is not coming out of taxes, generally.
And you're, you're gonna find every city in Jefferson County, every city in the state of Wisconsin has a, at least one. Most of them have much more. And a lot of them are, you know, when Dustin does his reports, you can ask, but we're not even close to the, the limit on TID. Assess value in the, in a TID district. And a lot of cities are at or over the limit, so they can't even discuss new tax increment districts. So we've done very well with ours.
And, and just recall that, you know, the TIDS are, the long-range goal of a TID is to, is to bring jobs to the city and increase employment. So hopefully, that'll work out eventually. And it has already.
Well, if, you know, the TID number four is probably the TID that generates the most interest. But if you look at what the intersection up there looked at, looked like before, and how we're reshaping it to what it will look like in the future, you wouldn't have been able to do that without TID.
Right.
There were, there were hundreds of thousands of dollars into water, sewer, streets, environmental remediation, storm sewer, those types of things that needed to be done in order to be able to support those types of businesses. And they, they improve the quality of life in the city of Lake Mills as, as much as any other business.
Thank you.
Steve?
Had a number of questions for the Parks Department, other than that, pretty quiet.
And?
The same as Diane's?
Yeah, I had the same question as Diane's, but that's, that's it.
And I too, so. I close this correspondence. Questions and public comment? Misty, would you read that for me?
The notice?
Yes, please.
Questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda unless the item is the subject of a public hearing. If your comments pertain to a public hearing, you are asked to hold your comments until the hearing. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you've registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided.
Are there any questions for the council or comments? Please come to the podium. Please sign in, state your name and address.
Terry Railing, 1016 Mulberry. A week ago Saturday, it was not funny. I came in to go to the hardware store in the afternoon. Forty-five minutes later, I get out of town. Main Street was so backed up, vehicles could not get off the interstate. We had the event again at Tyranina, and quite frankly, it was disastrous for the city. For one person's activity to affect the entire city, I'm sorry, this is wrong. I'm not against bicycling, running, or anything like that. I'm not kidding, folks, it took forty-five minutes to get out of town. Parking, that is an ongoing situation. Every time we have an event out there, they are all over the place. I usually see the tent going up, so I began putting my garbage cans in a driveway. My neighbors, they were parking, when Templin's was next door to me, they were even parking on the lawn. They were towed away. Every time there's an event right next to me, there's parking tickets issued and so forth. I know of only one time that Daybreak was contacted and asked permission. I don't know about anything after that, but it really does, it, it makes for a real mess. When we have the bicycle rally, even in the country, we have problems. On Highway G, they not only go one direction, they go down Hope Lake Road, turn around, come back. Now they got two lanes. Sunday morning, I come in, go to the car wash. You can't go to the car wash. What do you mean you can't go to the car wash? Well, bicyclers are going through. Okay, go to Century, come back, now I go to the car wash. The event's not over yet. I went to the car wash. Then I come out of the car wash, trying to show their authority and so forth, wouldn't even let me back in the lane of traffic. Those little rubber things, they don't make a lot of noise and they go under. But you can't tell me that these people bring money into town, show me where they carry a wallet. But it really was, folks, a week ago Saturday, it really was. There was people blowing horns and, and like I say, vehicles could not get off the interstate. And so I don't know what can be done there or what, but to have them routing through town and tying up town like it was, it wasn't a good situation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Please step forward.
Name's Don Chapman, live at 308 North Ferry Drive. I applied for a liquor license and they want me to write something to you guys, but I just didn't, I just figured I'd just show up here and just tell you that I applied for a liquor license. And just trying to get a job over at Mobile over here. And I've, in my past, I've had some drug driving tickets, but that's been down the road and everything. And just trying to get a job, and Mobile's trying to hold a job for me if I can get it or not. But that's basically all I had to say, I don't know what else to say. But just taking consideration, I've did some stupid things, but I've learned from it. Just hopefully, I can get the liquor license. That's all I have, thank you.
Anyone else?
I guess I've got a question, first of all. This is not pertaining to Lake Mills City Council business. Could you yield me three minutes? I'm Scott Mahalik, I'm running for the Wisconsin State Assembly. I just wanted to introduce myself. I did have some things to say, would take three minutes.
I hear a motion to, can we do that, Vicky?
Sure.
Yeah? You don't even need to yield. Suspend the rules? You don't even need to yield.
You don't need to?
Three minutes, he's got three minutes.
You've got three minutes for public comment time.
If he wants to take five, then maybe, but.
Okay, thank you for yielding me those three minutes. My name's Scott Mahalik, I'm running for the Wisconsin's 38th Assembly District, which includes my hometown of Marshall, Deerfield, Cambridge, Lake Mills, Johnson Creek, and Condamawak. I'm running because I'm an everyday working man who works for fourteen dollars an hour. And I believe that common workers' voices are being trumped by big bags of money. I want to stop the degradation of Wisconsin educators in my home state. I'm running because they say people like me, an everyday working man who works for fourteen dollars an hour, who's a family man, can't. I've run once before in 2012, when I received thirteen thousand votes and forty percent of the popular vote, including seventeen hundred votes right here in Lake Mills. I'm speaking before you tonight because I'm making a tour of the city hall meetings, village board meetings throughout the 38th district. I know that school districts and local municipal boards are the driving force of economic development. When a company wants to move to your town, they ask you for tax incentives, TIF district money, water, natural resources, road access, land, et cetera. I'm here to tell you tonight that I will never be in favor of any bill that takes away your local control or exercises budgetary caps for you. I'm here to tell you that I support, support raising shared revenue. This will help you meet your budgetary demands to keep money in your TIF districts. At a time when Oscar Mayer, Baumattic, Hamlin right here in Lake Mills, Quad Graphics, SC Johnson Wax are leaving the state, what are our state reps and state senators doing? They're passing a bill to get rid of the Government Accountability Board and double the campaign contribution limits to their own campaigns. At a time when Wisconsin is second in the nation in job loss, we should be having extraordinary session on how to create jobs, how to get people back to work. How do we do this? We invest in education, green jobs, renewables. We turn back to the clock to 1978, when Wisconsin tech schools were absolutely free. Doesn't it make a sense right now that when Hamlin has 175 workers that are gonna be losing their jobs, that they be able to attend a tech school to get a new skill absolutely free? These are just a few of the things that I'm running on. My website is www.mahalikforassembly.com. We also need to tear down regulations such as a law that does not allow microbreweries to distribute their own Cagden bottled beer, like Tyranina right here in Lake Mills. Finally, if we remodel our public waysides to put people back to work and pay for our transportation needs, instead of borrowing money for our transportation needs, I believe Wisconsin will be a better place to live. I appreciate your time, my door is always open, and I look forward to representing your community. The last thing I got to say is, I want to thank everybody that lives in Lake Mills. I campaigned here in 2011, 2012. I've been door knocking here for about the last six weeks, and everybody on both sides of the aisle has just been outstanding. I mean, they're friendly. And what I really like about your town is, you know, you guys got a lot of great local businesses. Gentlemen, if you've never been to Denny's Barber Shop for a straight edge shave, you gotta put it on your bucket list, I'm telling you. Waterhouse Bistro for a great cup of coffee and a sandwich, going to Tyranina for a cold one and listening to a band in the summertime. And this, I mean, you've got it made here in Lake Mills. And I want to thank you very much for yielding the time.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else, we'll go ahead and close questions and public comment and move to the city manager's report. Steve?
I distributed the summary from Steve Graybo about our session. He was very complimentary of where we've been in the last year, and the report looked good. Last meeting, Mr. Grundon, you asked about a walkway between bumper to bumper and ShopCo. We do have one, and I've asked Duane and Paul to look into it, see what kind of conditions are there. The library handicapped ramp, it is on the north side of the building. And originally, that parking lot didn't cover the whole back, so the handicapped ramp is at the far east end. That, the handicap parking space is at the far east end of that back parking lot. And you're, you're supposed to go over and then take the concrete ramp up to the top. That area right there is supposed to be, there's a, there's a block of concrete in front of the door, and then the handicapped ramp comes up and lines up with it. That handicapped ramp has settled and created about a two to two and a half inch step. So we are looking into either mudjacking, or grinding, or pouring a new area there, so that we'll fix that handicapped ramp. That, that ramp is, it was a handicapped ramp, but the, the step was created by settling. Wasn't, so when you said there was a step, I was like, but okay, it made sense now. Dark store legislation. Our insurance man made mention of it. It's Walgreens and CVS and Target and all those other stores that are filing on, trying to hide under leases and get out of paying taxes. They actually have some legislation going forward to that now. I don't know if you stopped and read your municipal league bulletin, but it is important for you to contact your legislators on that issue soon. Because that's very important to us, and every city in the state, actually. And we need to get that pushed through because that's a, that's one that is stealing taxes from our people and giving it to large corporations, and we need to make it fair. All set, you know, we go through and work really hard to make assessments as fair as possible, and then you get those cut out of you. I already talked about the plan assessment report, you have a copy of that. I don't know, we may want to go through that at some work session or put it on an agenda and at least approve it, recognize that it came through and that we've worked on it. I also received a Highway 89 drainage question. There are some properties on the south side of the city where the street's relatively high and the water is directly on the edge, actually sits on the sidewalks. And they were checking to see how the design would be down there. I've been working with the project manager, Vicky Romanesco. The street will be lowered, but not as much as I had anticipated. Everything from the sidewalks in will drain into the street and drain through the drainage system off. The question is, is how much water gets trapped behind that sidewalk? Because it looks to me like some of the sidewalks are a little high and will hold water in the front yards. And so I'm a little concerned about first floor flooding in some of those areas. So I've got Vicky working on that, and she's gonna give me a report. I provided the monthly budget report and the police department report. The chief of police did a very nice presentation, a little long, but a nice presentation at Rotary today, so I want to thank him. He, they had a, an excellent week. Recovered a stolen car and recovered a young lady on an Amber Alert, so I want to thank them. Street Department has been really moving the leaves off, and it looks like we're gonna have that water line done on, on the American Way here shortly. So any questions?
Just want to compliment the street department on getting that leak fixed by the, the car wash on the south end. That was, that was great. Got it paved and everything, so. Kudos to them. Any questions?
I would like to have the councils, behalf of the council, congratulations to our police department who was involved in that Amber Alert. It was like how Amber Alert is supposed to work. There was an event, there was a 911 call, there was an Amber Alert, and there was act, quick action, as it turned out, required by our city's police department, but it could have been any city's police department. A citizen was involved in, in calling the police, and so it involved every entity, just like it's supposed to work, and so.
Yep, that was great.
Congratulations to the reaction by our police force.
And our citizens. Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Yeah, um, is there anything that we should be looking at in regard to Terry Railing's concern? I also got caught in that melee, and I was trying to figure out too, what we can do and what... Is that our responsibility, do we, okay, so will that, could that one be pulled out of the automatic approval ones so that next year we can make sure we have a little better traffic flow and stuff like that?
Diane, why don't you make that an agenda item? I think that would be an excellent agenda item.
All right, so I'll, I'll bring it up at the end of the meeting.
It could be more than just, just the one event, it could be other events. I know that for Witch's Night Out by Main Street downtown, and again, compliments to the police administrative and you, Steve, in that you had police officers in the intersection moving traffic. Because in the beginning, there was cars backing up, you know, like fifteen deep, and then the officer arrived and, you know, overruled the, the four-way stop sign at Madison and Main Street and just moved the traffic through in a very speedy way. And so there's all the different vents that go on that really can bottleneck our town's traffic patterns, especially with our state highway.
We, we have hundreds of events that, that we go through and review and try and make a determination, you know, what kind of activities do we need to be, how do we need to be involved in the activity? Do we need to have police, do we need to have garbage bathrooms? As, as you remember, when, when we first started regulating Tyranina Brewery in 2002, there was a whole list of things that were presented, and the council thinned it out and, and worked with, with Tyranina Brewery to determine. So we went through and we had him provide letters from people saying yes, that he could use our parking. We started doing the inspections on the tents. And so we've been a lot more involved in all kinds of activities. We discuss at our Tuesday morning meetings every week, what's coming up this week, what do we need to do, what are the issues? And then at the, after the event, we discuss, you know, what happened, what went wrong, what are we gonna need to do next year to, to look at this? And Terry's hasn't been the first complaint I've received on it. We have received other ones, we are already in the process of trying to figure out what we want to do for that. That one is a tough issue, so, you know, having it come to the city council won't bother me at all.
Okay, well, we'll put that on the agenda and we'll, we'll discuss it in depth. Okay, anything else for Steve? Let's go on to council, I'm sorry, acceptance of committee minutes. We have the minutes of the Public Works Board of October 13th, 2015. They'll go on, on record as read. Council business, we have one tavern operator's license, and that is?
Lisa Galitz.
Do I hear a motion of acceptance of Ms. Galitz?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Item D is a discussion and decision on the municipal agreement of State Highway 89, or better known as Main Street South. This is going, this motion will be the catalyst to sign into an agreement with the state on the Highway 89 project. And I think everybody's read the attachments to that. Misty, could you read that motion, please?
City Council motion 15-11-2-1, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the City of Lake Mills and the state of Wisconsin for the reconstruction of South Main Street. Be it moved by the city council of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows. Section one, that the agreement between the City of Lake Mills and the state of Wisconsin, a copy of which is attached here to and made a part hereof, is hereby approved. Section two, that the city manager is authorized to execute said agreement, and to take such actions as necessary to implement such agreement. The city council does hereby approve the agreement and authorizes the council president to sign the motion.
And do I hear a motion of acceptance?
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
And discussion, so this is, this is the, this is revision number one, is that correct?
That's correct.
And there were just a couple of changes on there, maybe we just go over those first.
Probably the largest set of changes was the cost estimates, and that had to do with the design decisions that we've made, the refining of the design discussions on, that we've been carrying on in public information meetings. So it's, it also incorporates, now that the streetlights that we've added, the change in the annex area out here, it does incorporate some concepts of how we were gonna do the tree lines, which at the next meeting, I'll have a proposal to change that. But these, they're already holding, holding that niche and have an economic cost to them at all. There was more detail in it, and so there was a, we sent back a request to add information on why we were responsible for any environmental contamination and any problems with access or damage to vehicles. And there he provided the response, which was, this is a city street. We pay you to be able to keep it to the standards of a state highway, but it's still your street. And so anything under it or that's occurring around it is your problem. And that's our standard contract. So we, we looked at it, we made some internal interpretations, decisions that there, on North Main Street, we've already gone through all the environmental contamination from, I shouldn't say North Main Street, it's South Main Street, from Madison down to Lake. Anything from there south, we have not found any environmental contamination that would be considered significant enough for us to worry about. So we didn't think that that would be an issue. The rest of it is, you know, if we were doing the project on our own, we would have to do that. So we recommend that, even with those conditions, they may seem a little bit extreme under the conditions that are explained in the contract. They, okay, they make sense.
Okay, I have one question on reading, reading the cost, or at least part of the cost breakdown. On the, I see that we were charged almost, or I guess it's just a little over a quarter of a million for the on-street parking. Is now, is that for the extra width of the road because of that? I see, okay, well, that makes sense.
Yeah, we pay for the on-street parking, which has been in the contract from the beginning.
Sure.
That's always a part of it, that's why when we evaluated it, we decided to go with one lane rather than two. Because there, the additional cost of the lane and the additional cost of their right-of-way acquisition. Street's currently a sixty-six foot right-of-way most of the way. In order to be able to get the two parking lanes in and the two bike lanes in, and the five-foot sidewalks, we'd have had to push out to a minimum of seventy-six feet and probably more. Our standard, in our code for an arterial this size, would be at eighty-foot right-of-way. In this situation, we didn't feel that was appropriate, so we, we've been trying to work with them to keep everything within the existing right-of-way, so.
The bike lanes, that's state or federal or corporate?
Federal.
As far as...
Requiring.
Well, not requiring, but the extra, the extra, um, width required for the two bike lanes.
Uh, the, the extra, the bike lanes is required as part of the federal contract.
Sure.
The, the, um, sidewalks are ADA. You wouldn't have any option on that if you wanted to. Uh, certain types of design features could be incorporated in that might change it a little bit, but, but technically for a street of this type, uh, with two major schools on it, having the five-foot sidewalks is probably very appropriate for the handicap. This, this has a lot of land use changes in it, so you go from, from downtown commercial to, and then you have some fringe line commercial on the south end, and then a lot of residential. So, keeping it in the sixty-six foot right-of-way, in my opinion, seemed the most appropriate. And we really aren't looking for ultimately four-lane roads, which is why you do that. We can, everything we need, there's not a, a significant amount of parking on the street on the south side, so. All the design concepts we had worked through and discussed and, and, and come to that decision that this was the best, and we, we remember we ran the survey.
Sure.
And we felt that, that, based on the information that we've been provided, um, we wanted to go this route. Okay.
Anybody, got any questions for Steve on this?
I have a question on, uh, based off our workshop tonight on insurance, the, the part on the hazardous material and the diverting of traffic, uh, during construction and the hazardous materials moving through, do we need to look at additional insurance for temporary on that?
No, our insurance company would cover us on any of those types of issues. The main one that I was concerned about was, the insurance company may not pick up, let's say there's gas contamination in the right-of-way. We know that there's been some contamination down in the south end. There are some, uh, down by the town hall and Topples down there, there's, there's some wells. There's some level of contamination, but it's not significant like we see up at the north end at V and, and Main Street. There, and you would see that, and, and that would, used to be that PECFA would pay for that. PECFA isn't really in place anymore. If there's any dollars available, which there historically hasn't been in the last five years, uh, maybe you could get some, cause it's been on the PECFA list before. But our anticipation is, is if there's environmental contamination in that street anywhere along the line, we'd have to pick that up in some form or fashion. I don't know that our insurance company would pay for that, I, I kinda doubt it. That would be something we'd have to figure out how to pay for. Another issue that, that we, I don't know that if you've been following, you should've in the budget. Uh, there's money budgeted, uh, every year until the end of the project for engineering. They bill us for the engineering. We pay a pretty significant portion of the engineering all the way along. So anytime I call them up and ask them a question about if we expanded the right-of-way and we pushed the sidewalks back, we could plant trees and we'd have more snow storage, would you think that would, then they have to go back and, it costs us for that. And the environmental survey and historic survey and all that, we pay a share of all that. So the more expensive we make it, so like if we had decided that the right-of-way acquisition in the park was, was not the minimalist, that it was significant, and they had to go through that whole report, we'd have had to pay for a portion of that report.
Thing else?
Yeah, I got, excuse me, I got one thing, and please don't, don't read in, in, anything into what I'm saying. Um, number six in here. If the municipality should withdraw the project, it shall reimburse the state for any costs incurred by the state in behalf of this project. God forbid something happened, and all of a sudden, the decision came out that we're not gonna move forward on this. How much has been spent already by the state that we would have to reimburse?
How much have they billed us so far?
I don't know off the top of my head. It's, it's been a great deal that we've been billed so far.
It's about a hundred thousand.
At least.
And you can figure that, um, probably two-thirds is, we'd, over that. So about two hundred thousand dollars at this point, we'd be required to reimburse them.
Reimburse, okay.
Okay, any other questions? Misty, if you would call a roll, please.
Mr. Kirkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
And our, its favorite, discussion decision on the Humane Society contract. This is for, uh, the calendar year two thousand and sixteen. This is motion fifteen dash eleven dash two dash two. Misty, if you would be so kind.
City Council motion fifteen dash eleven dash two dash two, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the City of Lake Mills and Humane Society of Jefferson County, whereas section sixty-six point zero-three-zero-one, Wisconsin stats, authorize the cities and towns to enter into contracts for the receipt of, or furnishing of services. And whereas the City of Lake Mills has responsibility for the provision of animal control services within the corporate limits. Be it moved by the city council of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows. Section one, that the agreement between the City of Lake Mills and the Humane Society of Jefferson County for the year two thousand and sixteen is hereby amended as requested in the attached letter and is hereby approved. Section two, that the city manager is authorized to execute said agreement, and it takes such actions as necessary to implement said agreement.
And do I hear a motion of adoption?
So moved.
Second. Second.
Okay, and on this year, we got a little bit of an increase, but that increase was due to the, uh, population increase. Uh, they, 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 um, they charge on, is it household or pers- per person?
Per person.
Per capita. So, um, the Humane Society is, as you probably already know, has built a new facility to, uh, to better accommodate the, uh, the animals that they pick up. And, uh, Humane Society does not normally euthanize, so the, uh, any strays that are picked up are there for the long haul or until they get adopted uh, by a new family, whichever comes first. So, we'll open up the discussion with that.
Well, I'm against their long-term care policy, uh, in driving the costs up. But, um, it's nice to see that we're only paying an increase on increase in population, not any rate this year.
And, and they are trying to, apparently trying to level out the playing field between all the municipalities, so. Uh, that's a good thing. Mike, you got anything?
Uh, no, no.
Diane, Steve?
I'm okay.
Okay, here are no other comments. Uh, we'll go ahead and, uh, call a roll of the vote on that, please, Misty.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kirkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay, item D, this is the discussion and decision on a Class B liquor license for Waterhouse Foods, um, on one thirty-two East Lake Street. Um, Misty, would you read that motion, please?
City Council motion fifteen dash eleven dash two dash three, authorizing the granting of a Class B liquor license to Waterhouse Foods, Inc., one thirty-two East Lake Street. Be it moved by the city council of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows. Whereas Waterhouse Foods, Inc., one thirty-two East Lake Street, Agent Rayland Radeski has requested a Class B liquor license in the City of Lake Mills as set forth in the application received October seventh, two thousand and fifteen. Whereas Waterhouse Foods, Inc. currently holds a Class B beer and Class C wine license, and that the Class C wine license would need to be surrendered upon issuance of a Class B liquor license. Whereas the city council has reviewed the proposed request and recom- and recommends approval of said request. Be it therefore moved the seventeenth day of November, two thousand and fifteen by the City of Lake Mills Council, that the city council does hereby approve the granting of a Class B liquor license to Waterhouse Foods, Inc., one thirty-two East Lake Street. Agent Rayland Radeski, upon surrender of their Class C wine license, and authorizes the council president to sign the motion.
And we have a motion of adoption.
So moved.
And a second, please.
I'll second.
And, and Vicki, I have a, I just have a question. What, why? Are, are they, did they, does the business wanna sell, um, liquor?
Mixed drinks?
Mixed drinks, or what?
Um, Misty's been the one who's been handling all of the whys and wherefores.
Right, yes, yes.
And the applicant is here.
Okay, they make a motion to suspend the rules, Mr. President, or allow? Oh, we don't have to, she's a per, uh, one of the...
The applicant.
Yeah, we don't have to in this situation.
Come on up.
So, Rayland Radeski, one thirty-two East Lake Street. To answer your question, we have, uh, three, uh, real reasons why we're looking to do this. One is we make a lot of our own, um, vanilla, we make a lot of our own, um, spreads, and we make some things that we bake with, and we'd like to be able to purchase wholesale versus going to Woodman's. The other reason is we'd like to enhance some of the drinks that we already do. Some great coffee drinks and hot cocos and Bloody Marys for Sunday brunch. Um, we're not looking to become another bar and open till one o'clock in the morning. We're looking to, you know, have fairly reasonable hours and just enhance some of the products we currently have. And the third reason is to do some classes on how to teach people how to make their own vanilla at home and how to make eggnog and, um, Baileys and things like that. And right now, the, the kind of big popular thing in Madison and Milwaukee and Chicago are craft cocktails and using local distilled spirits. And there are a ton of Wisconsin distilleries out there, and we have relationships with a lot of them. Um, and we'd love to bring those to Lake Mills and hope that, um, people will come for those classes and the drinks and, um, being able to have that community here, we think will both be successful for us and bring people to Lake Mills.
Very well, thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question to Vicki. Now, for example, I remember when we were looking at, and it's not in this situation with Waterhouse Bistro, but where we had, um, a new tavern license to be, uh, given out. And I don't mean the bartender license, I mean the actual facility license. We have only so many allocated for the population. Does this fall into that category and use up one of those? And if so, do we have that available?
It's a regular liquor license, um, being that it costs five hundred dollars. Um, we have one left besides this, and that's the reserve license. And if someone were to apply for that, they would have to pay the ten thousand dollars. But the city does have that reimbursement grant, where they ha- are eligible under certain circumstances to get nine thousand five hundred dollars back.
And that would be in addition to granting this one tonight?
Right.
So we still have, oh, we'd be, we'd be maxed out with the exception of the reserve one?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just, um, along those lines, is the liquor license that went with carbs, does that go to the new owner?
That one's already been issued to the new...
Yeah, so we've all got that taken care of.
Good.
Okay, any other questions?
And this is all, this is all for onsite consumption, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
This would also allow though for some...
Sale.
For some off-sale consumption, or off-site consumption as well. Um, for example, like bottles of wine. The Class C wine license that they currently hold would not allow them to sell any bottles of wine offs, for off-site consumption.
Okay, so...
Does this one include, and maybe Ray, you can answer the question, right now, can I get a, walk into the, your establishment, get a glass of wine and walk out on the street with it?
You can't walk out on the street with it.
Not on the street, but within your little, uh, you have very well done, but your eating area.
Fenced area, yep, you could do that. And Wisconsin law states that you can recork a bottle too if you don't finish it and take it home. That's what our current license covers right now.
And, and the new license would allow me to get a, say, the Bloody Mary and come out with it and sit within the establishment, correct?
As long as you were in the licensed area.
Licensed area.
Which is her sidewalk cafe, which he has to apply for. Uh, you, we're looking here at saying, if I walked in and bought a bottle of wine, I could take it home.
Yes.
And same with the beer.
No different than a tavern?
No different than a tavern. It's, it's kinda limited to how much and when, but it, it, those options are available to them. So if they have someone, if they have a relationship with the distillery and they got a class and someone says, I wanna buy a couple of these, they could, they could sell them.
So, sorry, I misspoke on that one.
Okay. Call a vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kirkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Well, the best of luck to you. Hope you do well on it.
Thank you for coming to answer questions.
Okay, um, we have a discussion decision on approving the appointment of successor agent to, um, Dalgen Corp. LLC. That is also known as, um, Dollar General. So if you would read motion fifteen eleven dash two dash four.
City Council motion fifteen dash eleven dash two dash four, approving the appointment of successor agent, Dalgen Corp. LLC. Be it moved by the city council of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows. Whereas on June sixteen, two thousand and fifteen, Dalgen Corp. LLC was issued a Class A combination license by the Lake Mills City Council to sell beer and wine for licensing period July one, two thousand and fifteen, through June thirty, two thousand and sixteen, at their Dollar General store, number six eight six one, five twenty-eight East Lake Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin, with Troy Becker as the named agent. Whereas Agent Troy Becker informed the city that he will no longer be the named agent for Dollar General store number six eight six one. Whereas pursuant to section one twenty-five point zero-four sub-six with stats, if there is a change in agent, a corporation who holds a retail permit to sell fermented malt beverages and/or intoxicated liquor must appoint a successor agent, pay a ten-dollar change in agent processing fee, and a successor agent must be approved by the licensing authority. Whereas Dollar, Dalgen Corp. has appointed Christine Engelhardt as successor agent for the license and paid the ten-dollar change in agent processing fee. Whereas the city council has reviewed the proposed appointment of successor agent by Dalgen Corp. and recommends approval of said appointment. Be it there, be it therefore moved the seventeenth day of November, two thousand and fifteen by the City of Lake Mills Council, that the city council does hereby approve the appointment of successor agent, Christine Engelhardt for Dalgen Corp., DBA Dollar General store number six eight six one, at five twenty-eight East Lake Street, and directs the city clerk to issue an amended Class A retail combination license to Dal- Dalgen Corp. LLC, listing Christine Engelhardt as the new agent.
And do I hear a motion of adoption?
So, second.
And we have a second.
Sorry.
So this is just a personnel change?
Right, but I would like to amend the motion that, and I'm not sure exactly how to do this, but I want it so that when we notify Christine of the change has been approved, that we also notify her of the, of the, um, restrictions we have on where the liquor is placed in the building, so that we don't have her saying later, well, I didn't know, we took over, you know. So would I just make an ame- would I just add a sentence somewhere in here for that?
We can't, we're gonna, when, this is directing me to issue a new license, naming her as the agent, and those restrictions, restrictions should be on the license. So when we issue that and provide it to her, it's, it's within that. I mean, we can, we can definitely do something else, but it will be on the license.
Make sure that when she gets it, it's like, look here, look here, look here, okay? Then you don't need an amendment?
No, I can definitely add, highlight if you'd like, but if you wanna make an amendment to the motion, that's fine, but it will be on the license as well that I have to reissue.
I, I just caution that we don't, we don't put anything on this applicant that isn't put on everybody else, so, um, that way everything is above board. And, uh, if it's on the license, what the conditions of the license are, that should be good enough, I would think.
The licenses direct where they can have it, within their facility, and, and, so that if somebody goes in, they can see that.
And everybody else has that same...
Yep.
Yep, okay.
It's supposed to be hung on the wall, isn't it?
Yep, and it should be hung on the wall for anybody to see when they come in. And that's any establishment with this license.
My concern has been where our concern has been up to this time, where they have put the liquor in places where they can't monitor it.
Right.
And now that we have a change in management, I don't wanna walk back into the store and find out it's been moved to someplace again. This be the third time that we've had to reteach where to put the liquor, that it has to be monitored.
But that should all be, as you said, right on the application, correct?
On the license itself, the formal...
And, you know, and if they violate it, it's a violation of the conditions, and, you know, we'll take appropriate action at that point.
Yeah, cause if they're not reading the conditions, I don't know that another letter would help. Someone's gonna have to go in there and say, hey, did you read your license?
Right, right, and we have, uh, chief, chief of police can do that. Okay, any other discussion on this? If not, go ahead and call the vote.
Mrs. Fritsch?
No.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kirkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion pass four one.
All right. Ordinance eleven fifty-six, amending the tavern operator's, uh, license fee and Class A liquor beer license quota. This is the third reading. Sorry, Misty, but you gotta do it.
Ordinance eleven fifty-six, amending tavern operator license fees and Class A liquor beer license quotas. The City Council, the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does ordinate as follows. Section one, section three dash one dash two dash C, classes of licenses and fees of the Lake Mills Municipal Code is amended as follows. Operator's license, twenty-five dollars for a two-year license expiring June thirty on each odd-numbered year. Section two, section three dash one dash two dash E, liquor license quotas of the Lake Mills Municipal Code is amended by adding the following. Letter E, license quotas, one, retail Class B liquor license as approved in section one twenty-five point five one sub four with stats. Two, Class A liquor licenses shall not be issued at a rate that exceeds one license for every one thousand in population or fraction thereof, as that number is provided periodically by the Wisconsin Department of Administration. Three, Class A beer licenses shall not be issued at a rate that exceeds one license for every seven hundred in population or fraction thereof, as that number is provided periodically by the Wisconsin Department of Administration. Four, if territory containing premises covered by a Class A liquor license or Class A beer license is annexed into the city, and if the city's quota would not otherwise allow a Class A license for the premises, the city's quota is increased to include the license of each premises in the annexed territory. Section three, this ordinance was sponsored by Council Representative Steve Kirkovich. Section four, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent with or contravening the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section five, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and publication as provided by law.
And we have a motion of adoption of ordinance eleven fifty-six.
So moved.
In a second, please.
Second.
Discussion. Really, this thing, it, the only thing it does is clear, it is, uh, increases the, um, the operator's license from ten to twenty-five dollars for a two-year license rather than ten dollars for a one-year license, if I remember right.
Rather than a ten dollars for a two-year license.
Oh, it was a two-year, okay. And the other thing is, is, uh, a paragraph four, uh, if annexation takes place and, um,
Correct.
They're grandfathered in.
They get to bring their, their license essentially with them. We get to increase our quota by one to accommodate them if they were to annex in.
If we'd annex Watertown, we'd get a gazillion, wouldn't we? Okay, if, uh, no other discussion, go ahead and call the vote.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Mr. Kirkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion pass five zero.
Ordinance eleven fifty-seven, petition of annexation, simdon. This is the second reading. Go ahead and read the title.
Ordinance number eleven fifty-seven, an ordinance annexing territory to the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin.
And that'll move, eleven fifty-seven will move to the third reading at the next meeting. Um, eleven fifty-eight is a petition for annexation for PMY LLC. This is also the second reading. Misty, if you'd read the title.
Ordinance eleven fifty-eight, an ordinance annexing territory to the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin.
This will move, also move on to the third reading at the next meeting. And moving on to ordinance eleven fifty-nine, petition for annexation, City of Lake Mills, Elm Street, right of way. This is also the second meeting. Misty, if you would.
Ordinance number eleven fifty-nine, an ordinance annexing territory to the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin.
And ordinance eleven fifty-nine will move to the third reading at the next meeting. And ordinance eleven sixty, this is a stop sign at Elm and Grant Street. This is the first reading. Um, why don't you go ahead and just read that? I think this is a pretty quick one, isn't it? Why don't you go ahead and read that?
Or, sure. Ordinance eleven sixty, stop sign located at Elm and Grant Street. The City Council, the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does ordinate as follows. Section one, pursuant to with stats, section three forty-nine point zero seven, the City of Lake Mills is, is authorized to designate locations for the placement of stop signs. Section two, section six dash two dash three, stop signs placement is amended by adding the following. Elm Street at its intersection with the north curb line of Grant Street. Section three, pursuant to the authority granted by with stats, section three forty-nine point zero eight sub six, the City of Lake Mills is, is authorized to designate locations for the placement of yield right-of-way signs as designated intersections. Section four, section six dash two dash four, traffic control at intersections is amended by deleting the following location for yield right-of-way signs. And the deleted portion is Elm Street at its intersection with the north curb line of Grant Street. Section five, this ordinance was sponsored by Council Representative Ed Grundin. Section six, this ordinance shall take effect upon passage and publication as required by law.
And before we move that to the second reading, Ed, why don't you just give us a quick synopsis of that?
Yes, I was approached by a, uh, person who lives right in that intersection corner. This is, uh, Elm Street, uh, tees into Grant Street. And although Grant is a dead-end street, uh, it tees into, into Grant, and there's a number of apartments there. The result in, uh, a lot of on-street parking on, on both Elm and Grant. And, uh, the person living in the apartment has witnessed over the last couple of years that he's lived there, a number of near misses. He said it could be in double figures, he's, it's so high that he's recalls, um, and he almost got, uh, involved twice and almost got T-boned. Uh, because people will just whiz right through the yield sign without coming to a complete stop. I went to Steve on this, uh, in behalf of that constituent, and, uh, Steve said he didn't have a problem with it. And we discussed the fact that with Elm going, the opposite direction being built, uh, to the north, that, uh, it made it, um, just common sense that we changed the yield sign to a stop sign and the, it's very, uh, simple fix in that the post is already there. They just unbuckle the yield sign and place a stop sign in its place. So economically, it's nothing. Um, from a, uh, preventing an accident, uh, it should have a lot to do with it.
Okay, and thank you very much for that, and insight on that. So eleven sixty, uh, the stop sign at Elm and Grant Street, we'll move on to the second reading. Uh, and now we'll go to, uh, item nine, recommendations for future agendas, and I think Diane, you have.
I'm not sure how we want to word it on the agenda, but we were gonna bring up the, looking at what to do with the bike rally and things like that.
We call them, uh, special events permits.
Special events per, discussion of special events permits in the city?
Cause I assume it's the triathlon, it's the bike events, it's, it's all of it.
This one was maybe worse than some others, but.
Generally, it, it has to do, when they guess, when they start getting over the six, seven hundred, they tend to start causing problems.
Oh, and it's not like we don't want it, it's just that we've got to make sure we've got, got it worked out so that it's workable.
Do you know how many were registered at his, the last event?
No, I do not. I heard fourteen hundred, but I do not know that for a fact.
So we get over six hundred, we got a problem, they had fourteen?
Well, that's in most events. Let's, let's take the Ragnar that happened last year. That one had probably three thousand people moving through here over the course of a twenty-four hour period. And, and there were a lot of people moving around the city during that event. Um, like I said, we, we evaluate each one of those. In two thousand and two, we had absolutely no regulation on those events. We went through with Tyranny or Brewery, basically, and did the first design of the special events permit, and we put a lot of things in place that helped. And, uh, Tyranny, we haven't really seen a lot of complaints until this year, but a bike event was a big event this year. And, or not the bike event, the running event. The bike event was good.
Well, the running event went by my house, and for a half hour, it was just solid people going by. I mean,
Was that Sunday?
It, it was great for my three-year-old granddaughter. She, we had cheap entertainment watching the runners for, for at least a half hour. But, uh, you know, that was just the mass of people coming through, the first wave, and then, you know, and then as it started to back down on slower runners. And then, of course, it went on for a long period of time as it started to thin out. But just the, just the main group, uh, there were so many bodies going by.
Okay, so we'll get that on the agenda, and we'll try to iron something out.
I don't know that we'd be prepared at the next agenda, but, or, okay, if we get it designated as an agenda item, as soon as we can get something put together.
Sure, that's fine.
That's satisfactory. Do you think any other items?
If I can just make an announcement before the next item, um, it's that time of year, I have to publish, um, it'll be in this Thursday's paper, the notice of spring election, which will take place on April fifth. There are two councilperson offices that will be on that ballot. Um, those are both three-year terms, District One with the incumbent Edward Grundin, and District Two, Stephen Kirkovich. Um, I do have forms in my office for anybody that wants to pick them up. The first day to circulate the nomination papers is December first, and the final day for filing nomination papers is five P M. on January fifth, in the city clerk's office. The municipal judge is a four-year term. I do have forms for those, and they can be picked up, um, at my office, otherwise at the county clerk's office. Those actually get filed with the county clerk, so.
And I think, Vicki, isn't there a requirement now for the county ju- for the, um, for the municipal judge for qualifications?
I don't think the requirement's any different. The municipal court judge has to be an attorney licensed with the state of Wisconsin.
That was the first.
Right.
Yeah, that was, last time was the first, yeah, okay, okay. And I was also informed that we have a vacancy on the Planning Commission. So if, uh, any citizens out there would like to, um, apply for that, and certainly welcome you. And staff.
Rudy, I think we should make note that, we, having changed the way we have our, uh, council member elections run, uh, anyone in the city could take out papers, because we have one from the north half of town and one from the south half of town. Steve being from the south, myself being from the north, and that allows for anyone within the city to be legally able to run for one of the two positions.
That's correct.
Correct, thank you.
Okay, if nothing else, uh, we're going to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one G, conferring with legal counsel who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or likely to be involved. Um, and we will, uh, reconvene after the, uh, the closed session. So let's give it about five minutes and.
There has to be a motion second and an actual vote.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
And a second. How come I keep forgetting that?
Mr. Kirkovich?
Got a vote. We got a vote still.
Rudy, I still need to take a vote on the.
Start the vote. We got a vote on if we can do that.
Oh, in favor, say aye.
Go ahead, call the vote.
Bless you.
Not bad.
Mr. Kirkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Motion pass five zero, thank you.